I got 9:30. I'll go ahead and call to order. Today's a special session of Jefferson County Commission to discuss the American Rescue Plan Act submissions. Michelle, would you want to lead us off first?
Yeah, I just wanted to direct you first to the guidance that I handed out at the last regular session. It's updated guidance as of April 30th of 2022. On page five, it talked about public sector revenue loss. And it indicated that the guidance changed on your board area to say that counties may elect up to $10 million of their total recovery fund allocation to consider as revenue loss and use for general government services through the period of performance. So counties may elect to withdraw up to $10 million of their allocation. Our total allocation was $11.1 million. Once we make that election, or if we make that election, we would be able to put that money into our general fund immediately and use that for general government services. It's more flexible when it's there. So we would be able to use it for general government administration, for staff, for administrative facilities, police, first responders, and other public safety services. Other uses of the ARPA funds, as they remain in the actual ARPA fund, will be to provide services for responding to the public health and negative economic impacts. So anything to promote tourism, anything to promote the negative impact that the COVID-19 pandemic had on the local community. We could provide assistance to households, which is providing food assistance, unemployment training, things like that. Those are some of the projects that would be eligible for ARPA funding. To invest actual ARPA funding and capital expenditures, the projects would need to be tied or related to the actual pandemic, or came about as a result of the pandemic. As we mentioned two years ago, it can be used for premium pay for essential workers. And then we've already provided this stipend for county employees, as well as component units. It can be used for water and sewer infrastructure projects to help mitigate the causes of the pandemic. Can be used for broadband infrastructure projects. And then those are kind of the overall summary of the projects that are eligible for it. We did receive approval for $11.1 million. In May of 2021, we received our first tranche, which was $5.5 million. Since that time, we've received about $20,000 in interest, and we've had about $2.7 million in expenditures. The balance as of June 30th, the amount that we currently have in the ARPA fund as of today is about $2.798 million. We are expecting the second tranche to be released any day now. I applied, I submitted the county's request for the second tranche in May. So I expect that to be released to the county any day now. It should receive the additional $5.5 million sometime before the end of July. I wanted to next go over the list of community requests that we received. You should have that handout. I also emailed that to you yesterday afternoon. I'm just going to refresh everyone's memories on the requests that we received. I'm going to go through the list from start to finish, just because we'll spend a number of months since we've actually looked at it. The first two requests were denied for COLA and merit increase. The first group of requests relate to county and department, county-related requests and departmental requests. As you recall, we did prioritize requests. County department requests would be considered top priority. County component unit requests would be considered the next priority. The third priority request would be those coming from local governments. Fourth priority would be those coming from outside agencies. And then the fifth priority would be utility requests. I also had a sixth category, which would be things that do not appear to be eligible for me. There were only a few requests that did not appear to be eligible. The next item on the list was revenue loss from 2020. We've already made one drawdown of $1.5 million for that. Emergency medical services, based on the Fitch study that was released in early February, I did add a line item for that of $5 million. We've spent $513,000 of that so far for the purchase of three ambulances, related equipment and supplies. I included an estimated revenue loss of $2.2 million. And that was based on the guidance prior to April 30th. So that could potentially change based on any decisions we make today regarding the guidance changes from April. I included $2 million for potential COVID-19 expenditures. COVID-19 expenditures would include our public safety, or EMS, public safety expenses related to cleaning and disinfecting and things like that. Premium pay, which was approved and paid out for county staff or full-time employees, they were provided with a $3,000 one-time stipend. Part-time employees were also provided a stipend based on the actual number of hours they worked. Total cost of that was $541,189. Premium pay for our eligible component units had a total cost of $182,199, and that is already completed. Restoration of four positions that were eliminated due to revenue loss. We previously approved the restoration of two deputy positions that were eliminated as a result of funding losses. That is estimated to be $504,000, and we just recently filled those two positions. So they are going to be, we will start drawing down on that in July. We had two other positions that were eliminated as a result of funding loss during the pandemic. Those were the CAD administrator and the county commission's HR journalist. No decision was made on either of those two positions yet. Other requests we received were from the 911 Communication Center. He is requesting $750,000 for next-generation 911 EZNet to replace our 911 system. Roger Goodwin submitted a request for $100,000 for a demo of the Snoop Building. I believe that one was also contingent on grant funding that he was wanting to receive through Charlestown. He also requested $15,000 for a digital screen for public use for the permit process so that as the public comes in, they would be able to use the digital screen outside. And they would, we would reduce the amount of public face-to-face contact. And hopefully speed up that process. Russ Burgess of our county IT department requests $50,000 for commission meeting room, public meeting technology improvements. We discussed that with Russ a couple of weeks ago. Believe that the need is there for it to replace the IT system in this meeting room, the communication system in this room. Our technology is failing, and it's really kind of getting to a critical point that that needs to be replaced. He requested $75,000 to upgrade the email system communication, to improve communications to the public. Requested to receive from the Sheriff's Department. The first two requests were, the first request was included in the stipend that we already approved. The second request for vehicles was not an eligible request, so that was removed. And he requested $50,000 to renovate the animal control building. They are experiencing public safety issues at the animal control building because it is aging. And they've had significant issues with rodent infestation as a result of the age of the building. The next request came from the Health Department. They requested $255,000 for replacement revenue for unbilled vaccine administrative costs. $100,000 for HVAC for the building.
Is it, excuse me, is that for the whole building? I mean, or that?
That would be for the whole building.
That's what I thought. You can't just do the.
It would be for the whole building. And that is a project that's already included in our capital outlay fund as well. But I believe it would be eligible for ARPA funds, as well as included here as well. They also asked for $95,000 for funding for a new community outreach position that would help educate the public on public safety issues related to the pandemic. The next request came from our Parks and Rec Department. They asked for $1 million, and then they reduced it to $600,000 for public sewer tie-in. They requested $100,000 to repair an infrastructure plan at the James Height Park. And they just recently requested $41,000 to install three outdoor tennis courts, three pickleball courts at James Height Park. Those types of projects are actually eligible for ARPA funding because they promote health for the community. They removed their request for program revenue replacement, and then they requested about $88,000 in COVID-19 expenditures. They've had to replace some of their equipment and continuously clean their outdoor and indoor. So it's really done, you know, some damage to some of your equipment. We received a request from our ESA department for portable and mobile radios originally of $157,000. Since that quote was from about a year ago, they've actually revised their quote to $322,120. And I will update that on the spreadsheet. The pandemic has caused fuel prices to increase significantly, and we are experiencing serious supply chain issues for technology-related products. And that's the reason that the price has increased from $157,000 to $323,000. Charlestown, City of Charlestown, requested $150,000 for a homeless support position. That would have covered a several-year stay, and it wasn't just for one year. They wanted to hire some homeless support physician through December 31st of 2024, which is when the grant covers through. So that was for several years. Corporation of Shuburstown is requesting $300,000 as local match for pedestrian access of Morgan's Road Park. The City of Ranson submitted a request for, it's a new request, they requested $2 million. And that request came in from Stephanie Grove, the city administrator. She is requesting $2 million for a Fairfax Medical Access Route. What this route will do is bypass the railroad crossings and extend Fairfax Boulevard from Charlestown through Ranson onto Route 9. They've already committed $25 million to this project over the years in matching funds. The remaining portion of this project would extend 1,100 feet onto Fairfax Avenue and an additional 600 feet onto 16th Avenue. So this would give Station 11 access to Route 9, direct access to Route 9. Casa is requesting $10,000. This is a request that was deferred from the fiscal year '23 budget process to potential ARPA funding. Their request is for volunteer outreach, training and support for vulnerable children. The next request, two requests were from Jefferson Medical Center. They withdrew their request when I asked for additional information regarding their financials. The African-American Community Association of Jefferson County requested $20,000 for revenue loss due to COVID. They have not received donations like they normally would to help support their efforts. And they also requested $15,000 towards funding of a part-time position. Charlestown Race Track Chaplaincy is requesting $34,000 for $88,000 for economic support and lost revenue. Safe Haven Child Advocacy Center is requesting $10,000 for their VOCO grant funding loss. I will reach out to her because, as you know, Matt indicated that their VOCO grant funding was actually restored. So I'll check to see if she still needs that funding. But their request was originally for $10,000. Commissioner Tabby submitted a request so that we would have a placeholder for broadband infrastructure. It came from both Commissioner Tabby and Commissioner Jackson. So there's a placeholder of $912,000, and therefore potential broadband infrastructure. Originally had a placeholder in here for $30,000 for the day report center. However, Kelly Franklin asked that we withdraw her request, so that is no longer there. JC COA submitted a request for $86,000 for a stipend for their full and part-time employees and $18,000 for a walk-in COLA replacement. The Jefferson County African-American Cultural and Heritage Festival has requested $12,000 for their, to help promote social and cultural economic programs related to African-American community and history. The West Virginia Thoroughbred Breeders Association requested $60,000 for breeding promotion. As you know, the horse races here in Charlestown are really, have been around for a long time. So the breeding promotion would help support that. Charlestown Horsemen's Benevolent Protective Association requested $65,000 to study the economic impact of thoroughbred industry on the local economy. They also requested $150,000 for a three-year program to provide an internship program for the EAC One program. Bakersfield Fire Department had three requests. They requested $154,000 for replacement of portable radios, $136,000 for staffing reimbursement due to the volunteer shortage that resulted during COVID. And they requested $64,000 to pay off their ambulance loan. Charles Washington Symphony Orchestra Corporation submitted a $10,000 request for re-engagement and recruitment efforts due to the COVID-19 pandemic. They have participation declines. And then Jefferson County Community Ministries requested $403,000 for a multi-year project to create funding for reducing preventing homelessness, offsetting medical expenses, relieving economic harm to workers and households for providing financial and food assistance and by continuing to operate their emergency shelter. The second request on there is new. It was deferred from fiscal year '23 budget process. They requested $80,000 for providing help with their homeless and food pantry. The next request is from Animal Welfare Society of Jefferson County. This is also a new request. They requested $59,000 to provide revenue to help with their spay and neuter program due to the COVID-19 pandemic. They did not receive donations and have not been able to use that program to its fullest extent. Harper's Ferry withdrew a number of their requests. The only request they kept in there was water distribution improvements and repair for $5 million. Harper's Ferry Boulevard Public Service District requested $120,000 for sewer pipeline rehab projects. Charlestown Utility Board requested $750,000 for sanitary sewer collection system and renewal and replacement of system projects. Sanadoa Junction Public Sewer Incorporated, on behalf of Sea Tub, requests $1.153 million for sanitary sewer collection system and decommission and connection to Sea Tub. Jefferson County Water Advisory Commission requested $400,000 for a three-year groundwater study. And the other two requests were withdrawn. At the bottom of your sheet, it does kind of show you, I have an accounting there of the total amounts that we've received from ARPA funding of $5.5 million. Interest earned of $20,000 less total expense, $2.7 million. We currently have a balance in the ARPA fund of $2.798 million. We're expecting to receive the second installment sometime in July of $5.5 million. By the end of fiscal year '23, we should have about $8.348 million. So I'd like to just open it up to you. I think there are another requests that were deferred from fiscal year '23 process that we should consider sooner rather than later. We have a major decision we need to make regarding what we want to do regarding the guidance changes and potentially withdrawing funds. And then there are also a number of worthwhile community projects that I think the commission should look into. But I'll open it up to you right now to seek your guidance and let's see if there's any projects you want to look at now, if there are projects you want to immediately remove from the list, or if you want to start scheduling some of these applicants to come in for meetings.
Yes, I just have a question. So, and I'm assuming you've already done this, have you cross-referenced this with what we set for the budget for the coming year? So like Russ's for email system, I thought I saw it on the budget, and I'll be deferred it to the ARPA or if we pre that in the budget?
I don't recall him having, he had server replacements for $250,000. I don't recall seeing an email system, but I can double-check it.
Yeah, if we could just double-check that. It was like an email system upgrade or something that was in there, and I thought it was the same one, but I just want to make sure.
I'll double-check that. The only one I remember was like $250,000 for the server replacements, but I'll double-check.
Yeah, he was doing the Charlestown part of the server replacement first.
But the public meeting rooms, that one definitely was not in there. That one should be considered.
Yes.
I agree on that.
The Snoop Building, we do actually have funds already included in there for demo of the Snoop Building, much less than that. We have $25,000 approved in the capital outlay fund, that's approved several years ago. But I believe the cost has gone up significantly since then.
So we already have $25,000.
We have $25,000 approved for the 10-month.
Also, John, I know we have the CAD admin in here, and I know we talked about that probably about a year ago. It would probably be worthwhile to revisit that and determine if that amount or that request is.
We still do need that.
We still.
We do, but do we still need that amount? I mean, I think it was quoted at when the ARPA first came out.
Right, so it was probably a little less than that.
So I think we just revisit that to see what we truly need to move forward.
I like the idea that you reserve the $5 million for emergency medical services. I think that's, I think we need to keep that in there for placeholder. And if we're looking to do that, we need to, just because we're waiting on Bob's command.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
And I know that, I noticed that Parks and Rec, I do know that they were getting a quote on the sewer tie-in. That went up for dead. And do we know what the bid came back in yet?
Don't know. We can, I can check back with Jennifer on what that would be. But that's a good project because bringing infrastructure into that park will enable them to.
Really?
To put the pool in.
I, I, I just literally across the street. And that's, that would, that would be a one of my top priorities.
That would also give them a good ROI, a big return on their investment because that, once that pool gets in, I assume, there's going to be a fee-based program to get into that pool, I would assume. I don't know, Tony may be able to speak to that, but.
I don't see a pool coming anytime soon.
Well, you need the infrastructure to do it. So if you drive the infrastructure in there now, then the pool doesn't come for two, three more years. You're way ahead of the game.
Sure.
Well, and it's just for the, using the amphitheater, many people, you know, portable toilets are not their thing, or they're handicapped.
They're having a festival, yeah, October, I think it is too. And I think with the tie-in, the more events.
Yeah, they'll be able to have larger crowds and handle it easily.
Yeah, if we could, maybe at the next ARPA meeting, Jennifer will present what she has regarding the, I mean, while she's here, she can talk about all her projects. What I'm most concerned about is the, is the infrastructure for the sewer work.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll schedule Jennifer for the next meeting. We'll schedule the CAD administrator for the next meeting.
I know, looking at the requests from the fiscal year '23 budget, I'm really interested in making sure we get Casa.
I am too. And I think.
Community Ministry was another one I wanted to. And I would like to, you know, we've had from the City of Charlestown homeless support, and I think there was something else, you know, I, you know, I think that's community ministry's mission, you know, to a large degree.
Yeah, my one concern with the Charlestown one, I do, in theory supportive, but I'm a little concerned with it being a position, and when the funding runs out, then.
I would rather see that money go to community ministry rather than one police department. I don't know what additional resources they would need to be very effective. And when we could ask, I mean, what would you do with $150,000 to support businesses? I really don't know.
Combine their, very flexible resource, figure out how to work together.
Right, I agree.
And community ministry, their, their needs may have changed. There's, talking with Ranson, there's maybe a homeless shelter line in Ranson.
Okay, all right, well, that's, that's.
Yeah, so their needs may have increased, I don't know.
You're right.
Rehab, I don't know, there might be good to talk to Keith a little bit.
For the next meeting, can we also include commission meeting public room as well as the digital screen for Roger?
Yes, that's, that sounds really good. And that would, the digital screen, I'd be interested to see how that works. But that would certainly eliminate a lot of the one-on-one with staff and figuring things. You may still need that for someone that's never done it before.
Yeah, I'd also like to include Russ with this broadband. I know we've had two meetings now with the West Virginia Community Development and the grant application for Get Ready, Middle Mile. And I think we're having a meeting on the 12th.
Wow, that's right.
Committee. We've got lots of companies that are interested in getting started. And of course, we've got to make the application for Get Ready. We should pretty much have a better understanding of what our commitments will be, I believe. It'd certainly be nice to have Russ present so we know what we're truly looking at with that.
Yeah.
A little bit, that's inside for both of you.
The other, if I could suggest the replacement of the radios.
Yeah.
For the ambulance services, it would tie in with.
For, under Bob's request.
Should we also include Baker Tins at that?
Yeah, I mean, that's just a smart three radio, so we could probably toss it in too.
I understand, you know, radios need to be replaced, but I would like to somehow, and I know it's very early to even talk about this, do it in a rational manner with where we're moving with the ambulance service. I mean, I don't want to just do one depart, you know, Bakersfield, and then our ESA, and then we're combining or switching resources around. I don't know the best way to approach that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure out, we'll, we'll get that answer to you. I think that with the lead time getting radios in right now, sooner we get on that.
Well, you're right.
We could have six, eight months new title of these radios.
And then it'd take time to program them too.
Yeah.
So I agree with Jay's point. We might just want to revisit that with Baker to find out what the true need is.
Yeah, or just put it under portable, you know, radios for emergency services.
And their ambulance, why can't it cancel?
That's what I was wondering.
I'll revisit all three of them. I'm not sure that they need staffing reimbursement any longer. I'll find out.
I did get a, I did get a call from Friend of Gasples.
Yeah.
About the Jefferson County African-American Cultural and Heritage Festival. I'm not sure when the festival takes place. We've missed the date on that. They were requesting $12,000 to underwrite that event. And I think that's an annual event. I'm not sure if they have.
It is, it is an annual event. Yeah, I don't think that it's happened yet.
It's August 21st, we're going to the Fair.
That's right, yeah, just before the start of the fair. Now, you're right.
So we're running up to kind of a deadline with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that through the community association, or is it through a different association?
That's what I'm, I'm confused on.
Is it for them though?
We could get some details on the festival at least and see.
We'll get additional information on that one then.
Yeah.
So I believe that just in the projects we've just mentioned, we're around 8 million or a little over.
Right, that's what I thought we're spending. And I don't know, I mean, I'll cap it up. If we have anything on capital improvements for the HVAC building in the Health Department, I think the whole system needs to be replaced and needs to start a building, so I don't know if that's an accurate.
Not anymore, it's not. It's probably 150 to 200,000 now.
But I don't even know if that would be the whole building.
I think that's the original estimate that was in the capital outlet fund. They got it from.
Okay.
But, yeah, with supply chain issues and fuel prices, that's probably 200,000.
And can we get some guidance for the next meeting for House Bill 4566? That, that could probably qualify for some, help qualify for some of these projects, or maybe matched funds or infrastructure projects.
Yeah. Yeah, we're looking at that for the infrastructure coming into San Diego Spark.
Yes, that would probably.
As well as the HVAC replacement and and the D- for name.
Okay.
Yeah, health center.
Yep. All right.
Has Parks and Rec looked at any of the matching funds?
I mentioned something to Jennifer about that, so I'm not sure if she would.
Do we know, has in the number proposed, what's one of it? Has the Health Department billed insurance companies for, is it 250,000? Do we know if they've actively collected anything for those vaccinations?
Even the billing, I don't know if they've strongly.
They also didn't submit a formal request. This was their request that they had done here in person, and then once we opened the portal, they didn't actually submit a formal application, I believe that. I did reach out to them several times and did not hear back from them. These, I didn't want to remove their request because they live in the Health Department. They did not actually submit a formal application.
Well, and they have a new administrator, so.
Right. They had a lot of staff transition going on.
Yeah. But I, just from my experience in that building, the HVAC system has been in bad shape for years.
I can reach out to the new administrator if you can check on the stats of the request.
And then maybe check with maintenance or with how often they've been out there working on things.
So did you want me to add HVAC on for the next time as well, or no?
I'd like to have it considered if we can get some, I mean, the prices may be extraordinary.
I'll, I'll ask Laura to provide that.
Yeah, Laura would know more what their day-to-day problems are with it.
Michelle, it's kind of cut off. It's a status email being used by the Safe Haven Child Advocacy Center. They didn't actually submit a formal application either, and when I reached out, I believe she got back to me. But that was another one of those projects that to me seems worthwhile. I know she did actually submit her application. Yeah, she submitted it after I emailed her, so we could take my note off. I just wanted, I reached out to everyone that had expressed interest to make sure they submitted a formal application. So we could take my note off. That was just to make sure she submitted.
Oh, she did. I couldn't hear what you were talking about.
The Safe Haven Child Advocacy Center, she did a note on there. I was asking if I still have the request for that?
Okay.
The Development Authority also reached out to me regarding just, just this week. They haven't submitted a formal application. I don't know exactly how much they're asking for, if they are asking for funding for their engineering consultant that wasn't approved in the next budget. So once I have that, I'll add it to the last comment. It's likely, you know, that they did reach out this week.
I'm, I'm not against that until we know more details, but I'm a little concerned about funding staffing.
I'd say yes. Well, this is for consulting services. Without seeing the project, I don't know if it qualifies.
Yeah, okay.
Is there anything else from the commissioners?
I just, I'm going to bring up the center on aging that's walking over. Do you know that's still needed if I'm assuming that's to keep meals whole and.
Right, I can reach out to them to make sure that they still have need.
Yeah.
Because these are probably.
Right.
So Tony, you submitted that request. Do you have any information?
I did, because I was there for my next director at that time. I, I do know they have not replaced it. Whether they have found funding elsewhere, I'm not sure. I'll reach out to Amy Lomond.
Yeah.
I guess the next step at this point would be to schedule our next meeting so that we can go over the list of things that we want to talk about next time. What I have for the next time will be Parks and Rec for the sewer tie-in, and then she can go out and present all of the projects I have. I believe we should make a formal motion on the $5 million placeholder for emergency medical services. I have the CAD administrator, Casa's request, Community Ministries' request, digital screen for Roger, the meeting room replacement of equipment, broadband with Russ, radio replacement for ESA, and I'm also going to confirm with Baker who knows what their needs are right now. The African American Cultural Festival, HVAC at the Bardane Center. And I'll get some additional confirmation from Amy. I won't schedule her for the next time, but I'll, I'll get additional information on the cooler. So I guess at this point, we need to schedule a date and time for the next meeting.
And did you include County Community Ministries? Can I hear you say that or not?
Yes.
Okay.
Or, yes, Community Ministries, I have it on here.
Okay.
I'd like to get it done sooner rather than later, just because we have quite a lot. There are a couple of depart, or a couple of agencies on here are really depending on our funding.
Can we add the placeholder for the animal control building? If we can, I mean, that's one of our buildings and we need to fix it. They're having problems.
I know Tom submitted it, but there's also actually a capital outlet project. It's not been approved. Did we approve on this?
That's what I can't remember.
I'll double check on that, but if we need to. I'll, I'll ask Laura to come present that, but I'll also see if that's already approved.
Yeah, I want to take care of our, our buildings as much as possible.
Next week is holiday week. How about the week of the 11th through the 14th of July? What's your availability? I could do anything.
For morning or evening?
Morning.
You want to stick with the Thursday, the 14th?
Yeah, that would work for me. I think that's, for the public too, it's a little less confusing.
Right.
And it gives me time to, it gives, yeah, people time to get their information together. So I coordinate with them. So July, the next meeting will be July the 14th at 9:30 to and I will schedule the request that we talked about earlier. I'll put this list out on the county's website as well, so that if anyone has any questions about what's coming up.
Right.
They'll, they'll be aware of it, but I will notify all of these people.
Okay, and I'll, I'll really have a motion to to reserve $5 million for emergency services, emergency medical services. It's been moving second. Is there a more discussion? Hearing none, always a favorite, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right.
Anything else from the commissioners? If there's no objection, we're just lost the word.
We're jerking.
Might be insane.